We will take turns being the first person to answer a question. So, the first candidate is Mr. Dwayne Limbert.
Thank you, Kevin. So, first I want to thank the League Women Voters for this opportunity to participate, speak tonight. This is my board of members statement, and then I just think it's a great opportunity to communicate and inform the residents of who we are and why we seek to be members of council. As a resident of North Olmsted for over forty years, with family in the city, for over one hundred and fifty years of residence in public service in the city, I have a great love and feeling and obligation to do my part in maintaining the veteran in our Olmsted. I've been a member of your council for ten years. Through my time at council, I've served on all the council committees and have experienced across a myriad of issues that I've come across during that time. Oversizing is an important part of the job. I ensure projects and budget allocation are maximized the benefit to us as residents. It takes education and experience to be an effective councilperson. My background, I'm a graduate of North Olmsted High School, Go Eagles, United States Military Academy at West Point, the Army, and Ohio State University, where I obtained my master's in finance, Go Bobcats. Having served as a captain in the Army during combat operations in Iraq and working as consultant analyst since, this has allowed me to analyze, understand, think strategically about the merits of budget items, legislation proposed that impacts our residents by our city administrators or by colleagues that have presented over the years. Throughout my time on council, I conduct myself as professionals of candor, lay the administration in my title, while also providing a different and vocal voice on issues, whether my position is supported or in opposition of the administration or a majority of council's viewpoint. I will not sway from communicating that position, representing the residents who share those concerns. Again, thank you for this opportunity to speak.
The next candidate is Mark Mann.
Thank you. Yes, I'd also like to thank the League for this opportunity to present ourselves to our residents and interested parties. A little bit about myself, I'm like Wayne, forty-three, here resident of North Olmsted. My wife and I raised our family here, six children. Three in state, three out of state. And the thing I want to focus on really is the last twenty-seven plus years I've spent as a dispatcher in the North Olmsted Police Department. I think that is what kind of led me to being here tonight. I've been a public servant, and that's in my blog. That's what led me to accept the invitation to be serving on council. I was appointed in January of this year to fill a vacancy caused by Captain Kelly taking that coming council position. So, by a majority voter council, I was appointed to the vacancy, finishing out this term, which leads me to tonight, getting into the reelection, or in my case, election, for a four-year term. So, I look forward to the opportunity to continue serving City of North Olmsted. It's been an honor to serve. Just forward to that opportunity to continue serving City of North Olmsted in its residence. Thank you.
Thank you. And Matthew Murray?
Thank you, Kevin. And I also want to thank the League Women Voters for hosting this candid forum. I've been a resident of North Olmsted for twenty-two years, and I live on Clifford Drive. My wife Jennifer and I have been married for twenty-two years, and we have one son named William, who graduated two years ago from North Olmsted. I'm a graduate of Ohio University, Go Bobcats, with a bachelor's degree in healthcare administration. I work at every hospital as a manager of the mal cancers. I've worked for the Cleveland Clinic for twenty-eight years, which has given me vast experience in management, leadership, problem solving, customer service, and fiscal and budget management. I work well under pressure, and I'm willing and able to make difficult decisions and develop innovative solutions. I've also been very involved with volunteering, including being a past member of the Board of Directors of the Western Region Federal Credit Union. I've coached youth sports for ten years through the North Olmsted Rec Center. And I've also been very active in the schools as a member of the PTA and athletics. For the past four years, I'm proud to say that I've been one of the coordinators of the Maple Food Drive or Maple Purchase Market, which is a food drive-through at the food bank for Maple School that regularly provides food for over eight hundred residents each month. I'm very proud to support and serve the residents of North Olmsted through both of these initiatives. I'm running because I want to make a positive impact on the community and use my work and volunteer experience to help the residents of North Olmsted. I'll be an effective communicator and problem solver, and use common sense decision-making to come to consensus of what is best for the city and residents. North Olmsted is a wonderful place to live, work, and raise a family, and I want to contribute and be part of the city's ongoing forward progress. Thank you.
Paul Shumsky?
Thank you. Hi, I am Paul Shumsky, and I'm a candidate for City Council at large. My wife Marie and I have been married for fifteen years. And like many of you, we found our dream home here in North Olmsted. We liked it so much, we moved my mother-in-law Carolyn in across the street. I must be crazy. So let me tell you why I'm the best candidate for City Council. In nineteen ninety-eight, I began my career in construction as a sheet metal worker. Why is this important to North Olmsted? Because North Olmsted is a fully built city and requires redevelopment. That's where my twenty-five years of experience as a Cleveland Building Trades member will prove so valuable to this city council. Let's talk about my involvement at my local union. In two thousand and nine, I was elected to committee for the first time. In two thousand and twelve, I was appointed to contract negotiations for our labor contract. And I currently serve as chair of our recreation and social engagement committee. I also play Santa Claus. Let's talk about employment. In two thousand and fourteen, I took a job at Cuyahoga County as a fire life safety inspector. I perform various maintenance activities as well. Clearly, public safety has always been a priority for me and will continue to be on your city council. Thank you.
Angela Williamson?
Thank you. Thank you to the League Women Voters for hosting this event. My name is Angela Williamson. I've been a resident of North Olmsted for almost twenty years. I raised my daughter here. I moved into North Olmsted because of the hometown feel that it had, the amount of amenities and the sense of community. I have been government worker since nineteen ninety-four, starting off in the City of Carmel Lot Department, moving on to the Cuyahoga County Prosecutor's Office. I was a bailiff, and I now was just appointed as manager of the Civil Division for the Cuyahoga County Public Force Office. When I moved to North Olmsted, I wanted to get involved, and I didn't know where to begin. My daughter went to private school, and it wasn't my decision. It was her father's. So I didn't have the opportunity to send her to North Olmsted schools. So the best way I could get involved at that time was to become a member of our boards and commissions. I served on the Board of Zoning Appeals in two thousand and seven. I served then on the Planning Commission from two thousand and eight to two thousand and ten. I was appointed to council in two thousand and ten, January. And then I've served there for the last fourteen years. I'm proud of the work that we have done. The colleagues in the administration have worked hard to bring our city to where it is now. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll start with Mr. Maddox. Mann, first question. What, in your opinion, is the most pressing issue confronting the council?
Well, I think the, one of the main concerns of residents right now is with the flooding that goes on around the west side suburbs. North Olmsted's done an above-average job at mediating flooding problems in the city. They instituted policies for businesses that wanting to come into the city and either build or modify their structures so that any modifications that take place will result in zero, net zero water runoff causing flooding problems. So I think this is one area that's particularly concerning to our residents, something that, as council, we should be focused on. Thank you.
Mr. Murray?
Thank you very much. I would agree that I believe right now flooding is primarily the major problem here in North Olmsted. I would like to say thank you and give kudos to the Service Department and the Water Treatment Plan for how well they handled the recent storms back in August of July. They maintain a hundred and fifty-nine miles of sewer pipes in the city of North Olmsted. When I found that out, I was really intrigued by that. I had no idea that was that long. Unfortunately, with the increasing severity and frequency of storms, the chances of flooding is only going to get bigger. So individual cities are currently doing kind of small patchwork fixes to stop flooding in their areas. And because this problem affects all of northeast Ohio, I believe that North Olmsted really needs to band together to look at a regional approach and come up with fixes for this. And then the final step, I think that we should investigate a grant program that would help residents that choose to put in some pumps or backflow valves, help them find it. Thank you.
Well, who wouldn't think it's flooding after this sun? I understand the previous administration took steps towards identifying some of the problems the city was having with preventative maintenance. And the current administration is a little bit more aggressive in these issues and taking steps to resolve them. I understand that it will not be solved overnight, and that we really need to have everyone pulling on the rope in the same direction. And I would support anything that makes flooding stop in the city. Thank you.
Flooding, that seems to be the topic. We'll look at three. Please jump in here. Flooding has been a major issue and has been an issue for a number of years with the prior administrations. With the prior administration addressing it, and now into our current administration addressing the issues as well. The new developments or plans are being put together to, within the swales and retention basins, to help alleviate some of that in certain areas of our city. Can we do more? Yes. Are we doing more? Yes. I believe that we continue to address these problems, but when we have more development, it begins to become an issue, and the city is addressing it. It's a nervous, everybody's trying to decide. I won't yell. I won't rebut. Thank you.
If you have candidates, your question part, and they can still add a part, and I hope they're here to vote electric. And if you have another question, it's a question. But these are questions coming from you.
Mr. Luke, it's the last. Where are you?
Thanks. Thanks for giving me that extra crescendo, building up my answer. So, actually, maybe I misunderstood the question, but you said, what's the base issue basically? To me, it's actually an opportunity, and it relates to the recent levy approval around the city's schools. And our, as a council, we had purchased two of those school properties with an option to buy the additional properties. And to me, that's really an opportunity, but it's also a big undertaking, given that being a mature city like we are, we haven't done a lot of growth projects as we release land. And in that, I'll work it in. There is opportunities to address flooding through different retention opportunities, just as we did with this bruised area. But this is really a big, big opportunity. We really need to think strategically and understand. And then the administration's already started doing analyses to make sure that we get it right as far as what type of use do we use for those properties that we purchased, and then also be thoughtful about how do we go through and keep people informed, keep council informed about what the next steps are related to that. So I'm going to stop in this one. So, thank you.
All right. So we'll be starting with Mr. Murray this time. This is a kind of a nitty-gritty one, but even though the issue was read three times and council's agenda and minutes are published, several people seem surprised by the cell tower and the park. Is there anything more council can do to keep people informed?
Thank you for the question. I do think that open communication is key. Transparency is key. So I think the city council should use any tool at their disposal, whether that be social media, the city website, and even the VIP text alerts. I think that that is a tool that's underutilized. I think when there's any major issues that are being discussed, a major legislation that's on the agenda, I think sending out a VIP text alert to the community would let everyone know that they could tune in and find out more information about it. So, thank you. It's a question of your.
Even though the issue was read three times and council's agenda and minutes are published, several people seem surprised by the cell tower and the park. Is there anything more council can do to keep people informed?
I think the minutes were published online on the website. It was read three times. I believe that's the rules for the public's board. Yeah, I mean, we could send an email or a text alert, but part of being a good citizen is being, you know, eyes open and looking at the stuff that you should look at. I'm not saying we couldn't reverse course on things, but then we would look at things maybe differently in the future, but I think this is kind of one of those things, you know, people need to be involved. When I go to council meetings and there's ten or twelve people there, and there's fifteen people that work for the city now. This is kind of things that can't happen when they're not even informed of your opinion. They're not buying news. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. The residents were, can be notified when this, how should I say it, the minutes are posted, the agendas are posted, the information's found on social media, text alerts. But I think the residents were notified a year ago. But having our residents come up to council and reaching out to their council members when they do hear of things would make everything packed because their voice is what we're there for. We, as council members, are there to address the concerns of our residents. And if our residents reach out towards about issues, it's our duty to explain them, navigate for that, and, you know, perhaps maybe even change a vote based on, you know, how many residents, you know, follow us. I know there was another issue that happened last year with an issue in the city, and residents contacted me as a council member, which really had a huge effect on the way that I have an authority. So I think community engaging with their council members is very helpful.
Sometimes takes a different viewpoint than perhaps the ward council member that's working physically to represent their area. So as it relates to communication, I think it's important that councilperson to have perspective and understand what might be a hot button issue, but you can't always do that. And I think once you realize that there is a larger concern, your job is to then engage with those residents in that administration and ensure that broader communications.
I do agree that there is a communication problem in the city. You know, the city does post a lot of things on the website for residents that if you can navigate it, you can be informed about a lot of the things that are going on, but not everything is there. So I do agree that something needs to happen. I talked to the mayor's assistant, Jeff Manzaro, about that. We're working on coming up with what the solution is to more effectively get the word out about issues to our residents. This one specifically, the cell tower. As it's been said, we as council depend on feedback from the residents as to how we should go on different issues. And preceding our vote, that there was no response from residents, so we didn't have anyone giving us alternative views. There are a couple of meetings coming up. The administration has set up for public input coming up until, or eighteenth and twenty-fifth, I believe it is. So it will be opportune to be prepared to discuss an issue.
The next question will start with Mr. Shumsky.
This is three questions that really belong to this.
I believe the city is higher than economic developer. I think we can do that, perhaps down the rain road. I think that could attract new businesses and bring back some vibrancy in our city. Not being from North Olmsted originally, I feel like this city has kind of lost its identity with the mall not doing so well. And it would be nice to see if we're gaining a little sense of who we are this month. Thank you.
Bringing back business and commercial investment in our city was very important. We do have Economic Development Director on staff who has been doing a great job. We have brought in the Community Investment Corporation, and we've been pretty active with bringing in businesses. We've brought in several new businesses between last year and this year. However, business retention is an issue. We have businesses who can't afford to keep their doors open. They can't afford to get staff. It's economic times have been difficult, but I think that there are ways that perhaps we can continue to support global businesses here in hopes that we can keep these businesses afloat long enough until business fully come back.
The, I think Angela identified a lot of points here related to, you know, a change of approach with the new administration around trying to create new investment groups and bringing a little bit more in-house economic development in this closely contracted approach that we've taken before. We're starting to see a pretty aggressive effort to, what I'm not positive about is reducing a lot of tax incentives. And while that brings it in, brings in businesses, we'll have to look how that flows over the long term. The other thing that I think we do is building and zoning development, and sometimes turnover of businesses is a good thing. Because when a business turns over and property changes hands, that allows the city to engage on planning, building, and setting some improvements to those structures to make sure that they're more sustainable for the long term. Also take advantage of some other programs to improve that building. And I've seen, you've seen a lot of that, North Olmsted. I think sometimes people focus on some of the concerns with the mall, and they're not looking at some of the other things they see along the rain road corridor that have changed over the last ten years, so that will, a lot of time. Thanks.
Yes, this is a multifaceted issue focusing on retaining our existing commercial base while still encouraging and making it easier for businesses to begin to move homestead. As others have mentioned, the Economic Development Director is very focused on bringing in new business to North Olmsted and developing the city as a whole, not just in commercial ways, but residential as well. So I agree with what Councilman Limbert mentioned about the tax incentives to companies that that's kind of a slippery slope if we focus on that because we could lose commercial businesses just as easily than it becomes an incentive that's happening in other communities trying to award them to their communities. So I don't think that's necessarily a solution to the problem, but it is a focus for the administration. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree. I think a very positive first step that was done was hiring the Economic Community Development Director. Since he's been on board, the city has had a lot of wins, and that's a great first step. But I think the biggest opportunity that the city has right now is the rain road renovation, master plan that's coming forward. It really creates a clean slate on the rain, and it's such a large infrastructure project that has the potential to draw through development, housing, green space, besting friendly locations, and all those combined can really spark a lot of economic activity. And then, of course, as council members, our job is to make North Olmsted business friendly. So we would definitely need to look at our legislation and make sure that it's easy for new businesses and existing businesses to get licenses and permits. So when they want to do a base on a building to build those spaces, that it's easy for them to do that, and they don't look elsewhere. Thank you.
We'll be starting with Ms. Williamson this time. How will you work to ensure that the city's workforce reflects the diversity of the city's population? How will you work to ensure that the city's workforce reflects the diversity of the city?
I believe that our hiring base is done not only through our website, but online as well. We are open to all candidates, whether they live here in the city or not. But attracting a diverse workforce would take effort on the city's part to go out to our other suburbs to advertise or promote businesses through job fairs and advertising in other communities. But I believe that North Olmsted's done a great job with the diversity thus far in bringing on candidates with all different backgrounds. Thank you. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Um, you know, I think there's, in our hiring practices, there's civil service conditions that follow strict guidelines. Um, there's, uh, there's bargaining agreements that, that align and, uh, and should address diversity requirements. You know, and it's always, it's always a challenge to live in a suburb that's, um, that has a, or, um, I guess you could, I don't want to call it lack of diversity because living here for forty years, I've seen a lot of growth and change, um, and, and people from different, um, ethnic backgrounds, parts of the country, um, backgrounds, uh, other countries. But a lot of the hiring practices we, we implement through, um, you know, standards that apply by government hiring practices. But I certainly definitely agree with, uh, Councilor Williamson that, um, there could be more attempts to try to outreach into other communities and exchange, exchange ideas on how we can leverage their, uh, their members talent and bring that to our city. We do it a little bit, uh, that will transfers employees to try and do that. Um, so there's different approaches there.
Through my, uh, eight months or so on council, I have seen a lot of indications of diversity in the city. A lot of the selections towards some of our commissions have been displaying the first diversity of our community. And the Economic Development Director, I know, is working with a lot of our business owners of a diverse nature as well to get interaction going with them, which will in turn hopefully help in the community to grow that diversity. So I think a lot of good things are happening, but as usual, there's always room for more improvement. Thank you.
Thank you. I think this is a larger question, not only in the, um, city workforce, but the entire community's workforce. And diversity is really important. And I think that the city needs policies and initiatives that reflect our multicultural population. Um, this is making all, um, everyone feel welcome, whether they're just coming to North Homestead shop or they're going to be here to work or live. So there's a lot of steps that could be taken by the city. Um, again, the rain road presents another opportunity. Um, right now, the rain road does not have any art, any color. It's basically just a gray tunnel down the street. That's a perfect opportunity to bring forward some art to celebrate all the different, uh, cultures and, and history that is so rich within North Homestead. So thank you.
I believe, uh, current, uh, hiring practices somewhat reflect the diverse and age, by age and ethnicity. Uh, I can tell you what we did at Local Thirty-Three to attract diverse people. We went and talked to the Cleveland School Board about getting a work-to-construction program that allowed diverse people to, to get into our program without having to test. Uh, I think something like that, maybe going to Max Hayes or the Police Academy or the Fire Academy may be relevant in a situation like this, but I think we should reflect at the first meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Limberd will start this. In what ways do you see the city and the school district collaborating?
Oh, that's a fantastic question. I'm glad I had, glad I had to go first. So one of the first thought a little background is in, in the intro, but, um, I have three kids now in, uh, in Chestnut and Furch and high school. So, um, getting to experience that, that school district firsthand over the last several years, um, as well as back in the, the glory days of the eighties and nineties. Um, but I think what's important is, uh, for one, I, I continuously engage the, um, Recreation Director to ensure that our shared service agreements are updated and modified with enhanced facilities that we created with the, um, the change of the turf field from the, the old gymnastics room at the rec center, um, the baseball fields that are potentially being proposed at the park, uh, the new facilities there at the high school. Um, and, uh, and you can see that through our rec programs. Uh, my son's been playing the third and fourth grade football at the high school, which is a nice way to share those facilities. Um, and then most importantly, we, we, uh, we negotiated a purchase of their properties for forest and spruce to allow us to, um, have more control of that for the residents. I'm going to go around this one. And, and lastly, we're going to work with them really closely as they build a new school. And, um, and what are we going to do with potentially other properties the same? Thanks.
Sure, any questions?
In what ways do you see the city and the school district collaborating?
Yes, as, uh, Dwayne just mentioned, I had the privilege of going to the convocation day at the high school at the start of the school year and observed the, uh, the administration participating in that event and the interaction going on between the administration and the school administrators and the school board as well. So I think, uh, there's a good effort underway and hopefully things will continue in that, um, that vein to keep that solid relationship going between the schools and the administration. Thank you.
Thank you. Although the city and the schools are two different entities, I think the majority of residents really don't distinguish between the two of them. Um, I think that there is a lot of opportunity to share services, to communicate with one another. Because at the end of the day, our residents, um, the two primary things that are in their lives and from a city perspective are the schools that their children attend and then the city that provides all of those services. So I think that, uh, there should be open communication with the schools and the cities. And anytime there is an opportunity to work together on any type of plan or project, they should take advantage. Thank you.
Yes, uh, echo most everyone's thoughts up here. I think it's important that both, uh, the school board, the administration and city council all work together as like a right and a left hand. Or I think it's important that we support them as needed and they support us as needed. The ultimate goal is to turn out good humans for us to work with. They are, you know, thanks.
Um, I think the city has been doing a great job thus far, leveraging with the school district. Um, I know I can say through our, as we had said, through the shared service agreements, as well as, um, our school resource officer. The purchase of the schools, um, was a, was a great, um, start to everything moving forward with project development here in the city. Um, but perhaps we could seek, uh, joint grant funding for various projects and city improvements, um, things that would benefit students and the residents together. But I think that we're on the right path so far and I'd like to see us continue, uh, working with our school board and the schools to continue. Ms. Tryne, thank you.
Will we start with Mr. Madden this time? Human trafficking is a large problem in northeast Ohio, including in North Homestead. There was an arrest of ten people, and they have this year. What will you do to address this?
As a councilperson, the human trafficking issue, it, it falls primarily under the law enforcement community. Having worked at the police department, I know that we had different entities basically throughout the west shore community that worked together to identify and put an end to any of those occasions that we've been able to identify. So I, I believe it is a, a law enforcement thing. Obviously, city council will support the law enforcement, police, fire departments in any effort that they need additional funding for or additional staffing and resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I do agree. Um, I think primarily we do need to make sure that we're providing the resources to law enforcement and our first responders to combat human trafficking. But I also think that this is another opportunity where the city and the schools to work together to educate parents and students about the, the risks of human trafficking and online predators and different things like that. So I think that, uh, this is a great opportunity for both the school and the city to work together, um, to work on this problem. Thank you.
Working at Cuyahoga County, I have actually worked in the building where the sex, sex crimes unit operates out of. And it's only one floor, but I can tell you those people work hard and I feel like they need more resources. And I think our police force could benefit by talking to those people. I would say that we would make resources available, such as money and training, to give our officers the best chance to stop this epidemic. Thank you.
Human trafficking is definitely becoming a bigger issue. Um, I think that we can, we can help by continuing to support our law enforcement division to make sure that they have the proper training to identify potential issues. Um, we could reach out to our hotels, our restaurants and our residents to let them know the key things to be on the lookout for. Um, those with the advantage, if you see something, say something because you never know if somebody is in trouble. Um, and teaching our children the dangers of meeting individuals online and in chat rooms. More kids are going missing now from meeting people that are being taken across state lines. Some are recovered and some are not. But we see every day, there's always something coming up about human trafficking. This definitely is an epidemic. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that Councilor Williamson has, has a good perspective on that. Uh, I will say that, uh, we, we do, as a council, we have over the years, for as long as I've been on the council, supported, um, the police force and ensuring that they're funded to handle not only, uh, global, um, you know, traffic and, uh, regular policing opportunities, but also engaging in a west shore special task force that takes on a lot of these more challenging, uh, more collaborative and community more funded type, uh, technology to address, address these issues. Um, and, and because of that, we've heard some success stories over the, the course of the years where they've been able to, um, prevent these or recover or capture traffickers. The only other thing I would say about this is that, you know, we also are engaged in the schools with school resource officers and engaging the community from, from those kinds of special programs. And I think that's another example of collaborating in schools to try and keep people aware of the danger.
All right. Yes, next question will start with Mr. Murray. Excuse me. Because some of you are incumbents, and I rephrase this a little. How do you or will you handle relationships with residents when they disagree on sitting budget allocations?
I think that again, as I had mentioned before, open dialogue is key anytime that there's any type of disagreement, whether it's on the city council itself or with residents. Um, and I think that there is just going to have to be conversations and putting everything, all the chips on the table, explaining why a certain decision was made from a budget perspective. Um, hopefully, um, the conversation can, can help either, either the councilperson myself or the resident understand why that decision was made. So thank you very much.
Yeah, I would, uh, make phone calls, answer emails, visit in person and, um, really try to understand the point of view of the person who's coming from. I mean, we have quite a few older residents in this town and then we have young families. So there is a lot of gray area in between of what's more important, certain parts of the community. I would say that we would try our best to decide what's the most important allocation of funds and do as we see fit. I would say safety would be the number one thing for me. And then after that, um, I would say probably safe roads to travel on and stopping the flooding. But, you know, these are, these are conversations worth having with people that you don't always see on the highway because that's how you fix problems, by having a dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you. Dialogue is very important with our residents. Um, I've been, um, receiving, uh, some, uh, because I was down at the main road several years ago, um, the residents, the management board opened up about what a car dealership is doing. Um, and Randy was just listening to what our residents get to say. I, um, got together with the dealership's management, um, brought in the residents and the management team so they could explain everything, go over the business plan and understand why the children were being named if they lived in our area. And while the residents still didn't, were still unhappy, they were able to engage with the dealership in a way that they probably wouldn't have done before without, um, the councilperson stepping in and, and maybe what's happened. These folks have become, they, they may have engaged with the city, um, but really don't care that much for them anymore. But I believe it's online. Thank you.
One of, one of council's most important responsibilities is to approve every, you want to approve a budget. And that, and that's secondly, is that, and then, uh, if the administration proposes a budget, the Labor Finals Director, and it's council's job to review that and understand, whether that's meeting the needs of broader residents. I would say that over the course of the years, it's typically more of an administration driven proposal. And, uh, and in the past, there's often been a broad support, uh, on council for the administration's, uh, budget assignments. Um, but anytime a resident disagrees, I think it's important for you to have those conversations, um, get their feedback on what, where they think, um, that budget money could come from. Um, and then having, uh, successful dialogue with the administration to see if there's no problem. Um, if that residence's, um, budget, uh, proposal makes sense to you, um, looking at the broad, broad, um, landscape of the budget, right? A lot of times residents don't see the budget, they just see this as a problem that's in fact, you know? So communication is important.
Yes, I, I think this does really go back to communication again and the fact that at, at any given council meeting, we tend to have as few as five residents attending the meeting. That's definitely putting a constraint on the input that we're getting from residents to know what their concerns are and to act upon them. So it's something we have to focus on and is that communication to get the word out to residents. Because finding out right after the fact is when the unhappiness really starts to accentuate it. So that needs to be a focus for the administration and for all of us, better communication. Thank you.
All right, now this question will begin with Mr. Shinske. I just, for the first time, heard that there is a plan for a new school. Would you be in favor of a project labor agreement with the Cleveland Building Trades to build the facility?
Yes, I would be in favor of a project labor agreement with the Cleveland Building Trades because that not only protects the workers, but it also protects the municipality. Because project labor agreements are with good, upstanding contractors that are licensed and bonded and have a history of doing good work in this city. that are licensed and bonded and have a history of doing good work in this city and nation. Thank you.
Yes, I would also support any project that we bring up with the schools. The Cleveland Building Trades bring in highly skilled individuals who know their jobs. They're not just run-of-the-mill people. These folks really do their training. And with all of the different unions under the umbrella of the Cleveland Trades, I think all of the necessities would be completed in a very professional and very safe way.
I don't have a position coming into not seeing what this proposal looks like. Our job as council people is to review the administration's approach, how they want to engage through a request for proposal process, analyze the different contractors and vendors that are providing the service. And it's an oversight in the school building. I certainly am in favor of them collaborating with the schools, where it benefits the residents, the city, and the economic development of the city. But I don't, I don't think I'm in a position where we can give more details in the communication to use that. Is that Cleveland Building Trades agreement, or working mostly with Cleveland Building Trades to use them for projects within the city, certainly something that I encourage as a former union person. I see the value of union workers doing projects, skill level. It's something that we need to certainly consider during all of our requests for proposals. I think the administration does certainly include them in the process and quite often makes their selection from the CBT participants. And consequently, the projects are handled by those tradespeople. Thank you.
Thank you. I would support a project labor agreement with the Cleveland Building Trades Association. Ultimately, I think that this guarantees the highest quality work while protecting the resources and assets of the city. And you know when that work is done, that it's going to be done right. So thank you very much.
How do you separate yourself from fellow candidates? What's your one strength that you bring to city council?
I'm an independent voice. I have over nearly thirty years of local and county government experience. But I have to say that it's, it's being an independent voice and not just voting on something because somebody wants you to vote on it. I think being able to vet the issues, understand what effects those issues will have, and listening to our residents, I think that is really the key here. And that's what we keep coming back to, is communication. Is first and foremost with our residents. If you don't have it, then you don't understand the issues. So I think my independent voice and being able to distinguish what is good and what is bad has been very helpful to me in the fourteen years that I've been on the council. Thank you.
Yes, I guess the elephant is I'm the only non-registered Democrat, so that would make it different. I approach everything with professionalism and in working for a collaborative approach. Sometimes I collaborate with my fellow council members. Other times, I support the administration based on the merits of the issue. And I treat each issue on its own merits, and I treat those relationships related to that issue on their own merits. I don't carry those forward to the next, the next thing on the agenda. I'm always listening to what my peers think with an open ear. Try to communicate my agreements or opposition, their views professionally. And I think over the last ten years, that's, that's made me effective to constructively influence when I haven't been a major member of the council. We will say that having never been in a political position before this year, this campaign season has been quite enlightening to me during the process of knocking on doors, speaking to our residents. You don't know what you're going to hear when that person comes to the door. So it's likely to be whatever the particular concern is of that neighborhood that you're in, because each neighborhood has different things that concern them. What I do say to all of them is I will listen to you. I will get you an answer. It may not be the answer you want to hear, but I will respond to you and get you an answer to whatever the concern is. Thank you.
I believe that the fact that I'm not currently on city council is actually a strength for me, because it allows me to come into the role with a brand new, fresh set of eyes, a brand new opinion, no predetermined ideas about things. So that definitely would allow me to take a fresh look at everything without having an opinion formed previously. So thank you very much.
I'm a very hardworking person. I don't always know all the answers. I have enough humility to admit when I'm wrong around other people, and your idea is better, you go with the best idea, not mine. I think that's important because some people try to be right instead of doing right. Thank you.
Thank you. That's another questions that have been submitted. So now we will give our candidates the time for their closing remarks. And as I promised, we'll start with Ms. Wilson.
Sure you want to start with her then? I have been honored to serve our residents for the last fourteen years as your council member at large and as three years as a volunteer on our boards and commissions. I bring over thirty years of public service experience, both local and county government. I have worked hard with my colleagues and administration to implement a balanced budget by helping out services to our residents and ensure city runs efficiently. If given the opportunity, I will continue to be an independent voice on council. I will continue to ask the tough questions, and I will continue to engage our residents, keep them informed of Mayor's budgets. Thank you.
First of all, I would like to thank all of you for attending tonight. Thank the League for having us. It's nice to see residents take interest in their city's politics. I believe that my twenty-five years as a construction worker demonstrates my qualifications. I am, as a candidate, a qualified, hardworking, and dedicated person. But knocking on your doors, I have realized we all want the same. Schools that turn out, adult-ready people. Safety on our streets, schools, and businesses. A 911 system that we can count on, what we call basements that don't flood when it storms. Streets that we can drive down in the summer as well as the winter. A thriving business community and taxes low as possible. It would be my privilege to serve on your council, and I hope tonight I have earned your vote. Thank you.
Thank you again to the League of Women Voters for hosting this candidate forum and my fellow candidates. I believe that I'm the right person for city council because of my work and volunteer experience, including working in the maple produce market. The experience that I have has given me the opportunity to interact and support the North Homestead community on many levels. There's a quote that I heard recently, and I thought about it over the last couple of weeks. And it is, "We all do better when we all do better." And I'm running because I want to help the city and our residents do better and to make a positive impact on the city. North Homestead is a wonderful place to live, work, and raise a family. And I want to contribute, be part of the city's ongoing forward progress. I hope I've proven myself worthy of your vote and a representative. Thank you.
Thank you to the League also for sponsoring this forum. We appreciate the opportunity to be heard by our residents. Hopefully, lots of them will tune in and view this on social media and get a better idea of what each of us offer to the community. As far as I'm qualified, I believe it's primarily from my public service background. The last twenty-seven years, I've been dealing with a lot of our residents in some of their worst moments on 911 and have always strived for professionalism, handling things properly, and keeping things calm. I think that's what I bring to the table, level head, and a hardworking atmosphere, where I put in the effort and I probably a lot more beyond. I've been attending some of the mayor's meetings for the west shore just to see what's going on in our surrounding communities as well. And I appreciate the mayors giving me the opportunity and city council for appointing me to council for the interim. And I hope that our residents will reward me with four more years and know that I will do the hard work and be responsive to your questions and needs. Thank you all. Just in closing, so I'll go back to being on council for ten years. I came in the first time thinking the same thing, that I would be bringing in all the fresh new ideas and a new look. And that is beneficial, but it takes a lot of time and a lot of experience to be a councilperson. There are so many different parts of the city that you need to dive deep into. That's something that over the ten years I've been able to uncover, to dive deep, to understand all the different areas that a city needs to be functional. And in doing that, understand what budget allocations should be questioned, which one should be supported, how do they look at, where do we need to improve, challenge the administration when I feel they're being too aggressive for a specific area and ignoring something else. Trying to reach out to residents and help communicate in an effective way of why decisions are made. And I feel that my ten years of experience, my background have allowed me to be successful in doing that. I also feel I've effectively collaborated across council and the administration, have constructed dialogues, feel like I'm supported as a council member when a resident comes up with a complaint, think that was solved immediately. And this is going to be a hard, exciting time really for over the next four years. There's some pleasant opportunities that presented themselves with residents supporting new schools. There's some outwinding products. Services, we try to provide new things with lead pickup. So there's a lot, a lot going on, and you'd love to do everything, but the bottom line is you need the money to do it. And if you're too ambitious, I don't support mortgaging the future in order to get the services today. And I think over the last ten years, I've proved that my mindset is focused on preventing that future mortgaging. So thank you.
I want to thank all the candidates for being so cooperative. And we're a great group to work with, so thank you very much. And we have the West Lake North Homestead chapter of the League. And I'm going to turn it over now to the president.
Thank you. Thank you for being our moderator, Penny. Thank you for all the candidates for taking your time. We hope this has been informative to the community. I would also like to thank our volunteers this evening, including my co-chair of West Lake North Homestead, Nadia Zayim, Bruce Robinson, voter service chair, Isam Zayim, who are handling our recording tonight, and our other League volunteers. Please remember, election day is Tuesday, November seventh. The last day to register to vote for this election was yesterday, because early voting began today and in-person and by mail at the county board of elections office through November fifth. You can vote there early. We encourage you to make your plan to vote, whether it's in-person, by mail, or on election day. If you need help changing your address and would like to fill out a vote-by-mail application, we have volunteers at the back that are happy to assist you with that. I would also encourage you to check out our non-person voter guide at vote411.org. This includes information on the issues that will be on your ballot, along with a brief explanation of each, generally including pros and cons. As I mentioned at the beginning, this forum has been recorded. Please share the recording in its entirety with your friends and family. And we encourage voter participation in every election. Thank you so much, and have a good evening.